Okay, that's admirable. I will, I'm sure I'll get to it over the weekend a little bit. I've just, I'm so behind on so many things.
Session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at five o'clock PM on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. This meeting is being livestreamed, and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com backslash ISD535. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org backslash simbly. Present at this board meeting are school board members, Superintendent Ken Pecal, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States of America.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item 3.1 is a focus topic, World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plan. This is an information item. Tonight, the Board is being briefed on the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plan Summary Report that we are required to submit annually to the Minnesota Department of Education. On November 28th at five o'clock, there will be a public meeting to inform the community about the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plans, as is required by state law. Following that public meeting, there will be a consent agenda item during the regular meeting to approve the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plans Report submission to MDE. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Before I turn it over to Dr. Rock, I want to just try and level set briefly what World's Best Workforce is and what achievement and integration is and where they come from and kind of where we are. And I think in order to be just really candid with the Board, I think it's important to say that, at least in my view, in Minnesota today, these are entirely compliance exercises. That in the three years that I've been here, I've never once had anyone from the Minnesota Department of Education ever even remotely refer to our World's Best Workforce or Achievement and Integration Plans in terms of the reports. That's not true for the submission of the initial plan for achievement integration, but the reporting piece. So every year, we have to send this off, and we will do that, and we're doing it, and we're going to meet that. I think we should use the opportunity to make it as useful for us to be looking locally at where we are, because I will be shocked if there is any response from the state to this. And so I think we should take this opportunity tonight and in the public meeting to talk about the work that we're doing in Rochester schools and give board members a chance, which we don't often enough have, to raise questions and thoughts that we might want to take a look at. With World's Best Workforce, as board members may know, it is often referred to as a plan, but what it really is, is a set of goals. Unlike our strategic plan, which has goals, but then the goals cascade into initiatives and the initiatives cascade into action steps, World's Best Workforce actually doesn't ask for that. It asks for a set of goals that you report on every year. So we call it a plan, but in some ways, a more accurate title for it might be a framework for improvement that says, in these areas, school districts in Minnesota are required to set goals, and then you have to report on how you're doing it. So there is nowhere in the report to say, how exactly are you working to achieve those goals in World's Best Workforce? Achievement and integration is a little bit different in that regard. It also has quantitative goals, but they do ask you to do a plan that has strategies and a budget that you actually tie to your achievement and integration, and an annual requirement to report on those goals. Five years ago, I think it was, the state decided that these two annual requirements should be merged, which I think was of good intent, to try and make it so that school districts could do this once. And now they even have, as you see, a combined form, but they really are quite separate. The World's Best Workforce goals mostly focus on goals that have been pretty familiar to most people who've been in American education for the last 20 years, usually system indicators in most cases, starting with your state tests. As you all know, because of our cyber attack last spring, we were unable to give the Minnesota comprehensive assessments, so those would otherwise probably have figured prominently in our World's Best Workforce report. For obvious reasons, they're not there this time. We have made use of the FastBridge assessments, which are proving to be a really valuable tool across the district for instructional improvement, but as may come up in Dr. Rock's overview in a moment, they aren't intended as a measure of system performance. They're intended to help teachers actually figure out which kids are not getting which skills and then, you know, building leaders to look at it. I think it's still a good tool for us to use in our World's Best Workforce, but it's not right at the center of its, of its use case. With World's Best Workforce, last year, when the Board approved our submission, you actually approved in your motion all 30-plus indicators that are in what some of us call the grid, but our, our improvement dashboard, which, as the year goes on, will begin to be reported on our website. So in submitting this report, what some of us had to do was decide from among that grid, which indicators are we going to report on tied to the state requirements? So this year does not have MCA scores. Next year, we will have to have an important discussion as to whether we want to make MCA scores a primary or the primary achievement metric in our World's Best Workforce Plan, but it's not there this year because we don't have any assessment data. We were given a federal waiver from that plan. For achievement and integration, again, I know I'm going way down here in the weeds. Once upon a time, achievement and integration, or just integration aid, in Minnesota was all about racial integration, full stop. And it was quite clear what you were supposed to use that money for. It was racial integration in schools. When that legislation was reauthorized, they added the achievement piece. And so now, the achievement and integration funding stream, frankly, kind of, it's both, where they're looking for outcomes tied to the educational agenda you have in place, but there are not specific metrics that you're expected to advance in terms of racial integration unless you have a racially identified school, which Rochester does not at present. So those are the two buckets that we're going to look at tonight. The PowerPoint that Dr. Rock is going to lead us through, and I think Mr. Ruffin may jump in at some point for a couple of the pieces that are in his area of responsibility, it mostly focuses on the indicators, the data. What is also in the, the report that you have in simbly as well, on the achievement and integration side, is an update on the work. And so I would suggest that after we go through this update on the numbers and give board members a chance to both share thoughts and ask questions about the numbers, it would also be good for us to open the floor to give you an update on the work we're doing around MTSS, diversifying our teaching force, and post-secondary pathways, which are the three priorities from the strategic plan that are now in our achievement and integration plan. So with that very long pre-ramble, let me thank Peter, who came off of his week-long vacation to come in and do this. So I know Dr. Wamu and I are very grateful for this because you are being saved, board members, from my knowledge of FastBridge, and we have the A-team instead, so.
Vacation, talk to the Board about data.
That's right.
We all know that my brain is messed up. All right. So this evening, World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration, the outcomes portion of the slideshow itself, which is relatively short, won't take long to go through, really geared more a little bit towards discussion, as Dr. Pecal mentioned. So these plans are annually reported to the state. The World's Best Workforce Plan that you're going to hear about this evening's, it's last year's outcomes that we're reporting on, and we'll be working on a new version of it this year, much more aligned towards the grid of 30 outcomes that we have. And our new achievement and integration plan is current through 2026. The reporting components include those first two items. There's also a separate report if the district has what's called a racially identifiable school. That's a state term for a school that is disproportionately enrolled by one or more groups of students of color. In the past, we have had racially identifiable schools, but we do not this, at this time. The public meeting requirement is why we are talking right now and why we will, I'll be back again next week, and our report then gets uploaded to the state. During the reporting cycle, we, just like last year, there aren't allowed for goal changes or plan changes. It's only updating on our outcomes based on prior year. So this is going to be harder to see on the screen, but the details are in the slide deck that's online, so I'd recommend looking there. The first set of goals that we'll go through is the World's Best Workforce. The first couple of items are based on school readiness for all students. Early reading and early math are FastBridge assessments that are administered to all kindergarten and first grade students. Early reading, the, our goal was that the proportion of students that are in the low-risk category would increase by three and a half points. We will be able to report on the outcome of that as we just finished fall screening when we do our next update. Last year's screening data, it was 64%. FastBridge, early math, we actually have a year prior. Fall 2022 is the first systematic administration of early reading. Early math went a little bit earlier, and that, as you can see, is essentially flat. It was within a percentage point of the prior year performance. And then, as mentioned, we do not have MCA or MTAS results that we can report on. Within FastBridge, there's another report that will describe the growth that any given student makes over the course of the year, between where they start on the particular assessment and set of skills and where they end. That level of growth is categorized as being relatively flat, all the way up to what the assessment calls aggressive, meaning they showed a lot of growth. So typical or aggressive growth was the goal, to increase on FastBridge's A-reading assessment by three and a half points. As you can see, it was precisely flat, and I calculated it out several decimal points because I was curious, and I do stuff like that sometimes, and it really was like almost identically equal. I had to go out like nine places or something crazy. Students in all subgroups, we don't have that again because we don't have MCA results. Finally, moving on to the other end of our age spectrum, ACT, College and Career Ready, that's defined as having a score of 22 or greater on the math or reading tests. We've tracked this for many years. As the Board knows, we do a annual ACT administration to all 11th graders and other students who may not have had it, under state law that's funded through the district. So most of our students take the ACT through that opportunity, although plenty of others will take it an additional time, or if they're sick, they'll take a different day, whatever. So this is the percentage, percentages based on our students' results from last year. And again, as you can see, essentially flat, perhaps with math slightly down, but that's really close, and one year does not a trend make. An increase in the percent of students earning post-secondary credit prior to graduation, this was actually a surprise for us when we went through this, that it increased as much as it did. There has been some intentional work around PSEO, as well as adding additional concurrent sections within the last year, but that's a substantial increase of the proportion of our students who are accessing those opportunities prior to graduation. Our four-year graduation rates, this was based on a 2019 goal, graduation rates dipped statewide, nationwide during the pandemic. Last year, our graduation rate was 83.8, and this year, this prior year, it was 85.9%. Those gains were driven in large part by students of color and students that are receiving special education services. Significantly increasing, the percentage of students that identify as a few different categories there who meet the definition of on track on our FastBridge assessment. This is the achievement and integration outcomes. They fall into three categories. This first category is achievement. As you can see, it's an in-progress goal. We have our fall 2023 baseline data, and we'll be able to report on the outcome and trend next year. Increasing the percentage of teachers of color from 5 to 9% over the course of four years, we actually made pretty substantial progress on that. That's a sizable increase in just one year, from 4.9 to 5.6. The greatest gains were made in the administrator and ESP categories. Finally, the percentage of students with one or more post-secondary credits or industry certification based on SLEDs, broken out by a variety of student characteristics, one of our integration goals. And as you can see, we made progress in just about every single category last year of student. However, keep in mind that we're talking about 476 students in total, and so a shift of only a few heads in either direction for some of these categories of students can result in large swings in percentages. It doesn't take all that much to make it look like that sometimes. But obviously, the single largest gain is among American Indian and Alaska Native students, and then break, broken down for additional groups below. Free and reduced price lunch, again, almost identical. That was pretty close again as well. Our achievement and integration plan does require us to partner with other districts, and they are listed on the screen, and I will turn it over to Mr. Ruffin if he is ready.
You can keep going if you want. We put those schools on the board just so we all can have a reminder of our partner districts. Yeah, you can go back to the next one. Thank you. So this here just gives you an example of how our students in Rochester are integrating with some of our surrounding district students. So if you see the, the red are our partners, and then the blue are districts outside of Rochester who are still taking advantage of some of our course offerings. So you can see that firefighter program is where we have the most engagement from outside districts. We do also have students in the welding program, our certified nurse assistant program, and also our culinary, culinary arts program as well. Yep, you go to the next one, please. Thank you. And this was something that just happened recently. It was called the STEAM Summit. It was hosted by RCTC, but I think this slide is important because you can now see the mixture of students that were involved in this single event. And this was a huge increase from the year before, where there was a few hundred students, and this year, there were over 1,600 students from all of the districts combined. And you can see the numbers there and the grade levels of the students who participated. This really comes into the achievement and integration plan because the funding allowed the students to have transportation from their schools to the event, even though we were not the host of the event itself. So there were over 100 companies that were in the area of STEM, so science, technology, engineering, and math, including the arts, which is where the A for the STEAM comes from. And like I said, there were over 1,600 students total from all surrounding school districts. So this is just giving you a picture, like I said, of how our students are integrating. The last thing that I want to mention that is not on the slides is our student school board has continued to meet this year as well. We've had regular participation from Zembroda, Mazepa, at the middle school level, so they're starting to integrate with our middle school program. Even though our middle schoolers don't come here anymore at the Edison, we started to have our middle schoolers meet at their sites, and Dr. Marvin and Sir Lilius are going out to those sites and meeting with the students. So now we're starting to have other schools go to those sites as well. Our high school program continues to meet here, and we have not had anyone from our surrounding districts attend yet, but we have had interest from Dover Yoda, and then also Chatfield, who are looking to join after the first of the year.
And Plainview.
What was that?
And Plainview.
Oh, and Plainview, sorry. I think I'll end there, and then you want to do the what's next part?
Sure, absolutely. I should also mention, I, when you were speaking, it made me think of our early childhood program, which I meant to mention for our kindergarten readiness slide earlier in the presentation. Our early childhood programs are instrumental in those kindergarten outcomes, and they also collect testing data through an instrument called TS Gold, which is a good instrument, and we're ramping up our systematic use of it, and that should help with, again, some of those outcomes that you saw on the slides. And in future years, when we're a little more systematic with getting every student through TS Gold and all of the components of it, we'll be able to report on that as well. I just didn't want to leave them out for sure. So what comes next? We'll have the opportunity to redo and work on the World's Best Workforce Plan over the next year. This will be to better align it to our strategic plan and the 30 items in the grid, and we will continue to improve some of those measurement methods over the course of the year. Our fidelity and consistency with FastBridge has increased dramatically over the last year, as has, has some of our other assessment tools, which only increases the quality of data that we can use to make inferences and help kits. So with that, I would welcome any questions.
I think one point that's next, it isn't something that needs to be addressed in the report to the state that we need to send in by December 15th, but we do receive $3,255,823 in the achievement and integration aid revenue. That, as board members may recall from last year, is currently being used, frankly, aligned with our old strategy. It's paying for reading specialists, equity specialists, a limited number of, of other staff. And what the Department of Education has approved is that when we do our 24, 25 budget, we will realign the achievement and integration budget with the new funding strategies that we'll be asking you to approve as part of the budget next year. And so we have a new plan, which focuses on diversifying our teacher force, post-secondary readiness, integration with other districts, and multi-tiered systems of support and literacy, but our budget is paying for some previous existing structures, and that was approved because the state realized to switch gears midstream, when all of those were people that were actually at work in our schools, was not practical. But as we bring you the budget for next year, we will be reallocating that $3 million to align with MTSS, post-secondary readiness, and diversifying the teaching force. So that is a resource stream to resource those three critical parts of the strategic plan that we currently lack, but as is often the case when we're talking about budgets that are developed annually, it's a very slow build to get to that point where we can reallocate those dollars without impacting people who are out there working with kids in jobs. And so, again, the state does not require us to resubmit the budget as part of this report, but I wanted to mention that we will be bringing you a reallocation of the achievement integration dollars as part of our budget process this spring.
Dr. Marvin.
Dr. Rock, the first goal you mentioned, the scores of kindergartners on reading and math in the fall.
Yes.
I mean, they come to us where and how they are. What, what seems to be working, because they haven't yet been in our public schools, most of them, other than trying to get more kids into preschool, some of the community outreach that we do and connecting with parents and educating parents? Are there other specific programs or methods that we're using to try to get kids ready for us before they get here?
I don't know that I can speak to specific academic efforts on our part for early childhood, other than what the district already provides. I mean, generally speaking, any child who attends center-based care will do better once they're in kindergarten, and if they attend a curriculum, like a curriculumally-driven center-based place, they will as well. And there's a variety of other things that have been tested over the decades that are strongly associated with improving care outcomes. But primarily, the biggest ones that you can do are preschool and getting your child into a high-quality program that has those opportunities. As a parent who has a child that is in that age group, I was actually very surprised to learn how competitive in price, as someone who would pay full price, our early childhood programs are. I just didn't know about them. Otherwise, I probably would have used them. So I think there's opportunity there as well in terms of getting more folks in the door. When you look at the proportion of students who are in kindergarten who qualify for free and reduced rate lunch, we're not serving all the students that we could be in early childhood because we're not getting to those families soon enough. Part of that is related to how we communicate with families before they start kindergarten too.
Would you mind if I built on that question? The measurement is in fall of 2022. First graders, it makes sense, they've been with us, but for kindergartners, given that they've just come to us for the first time, what's the rationale for taking that screening or, or using the data from fall 2022 as opposed to later in the year when we've had a chance to maybe have an impact on the kindergartners?
The FastBridge tests change over the course of the year. So when you get a screener in the fall and a screener in the winter, they're not the same because they're assumed to grow with the child, because the child, I mean, even absent any instruction, a kid's brain is still going to develop over that timeframe, and their ability to do those things will increase. So you wouldn't be getting an accurate snapshot of where students are the day they get here, which for us, even if they aren't our, the way I look at it is, even if they didn't access our early childhood resources, we still have a responsibility to, of course, reach out to that family, provide them a structure, get them into our system. There's still all sorts of ways that we have to interact with members of the community who don't utilize our early childhood services. So it's going to be, community effort and community commitment will also be reflected in some of the kindergarten readiness data, and also kindergarten, or excuse me, community resources, who can and can't go.
I want to be sure we're understanding your, your question.
Maybe I didn't.
Is it why, I think, I mean, that was a great answer.
That's a good answer.
Is it, is it, what is the best measure of readiness to learn in kindergarten? Or why are we using this measure?
Why are we using this measure as our outcome measure if it's a few weeks after we've gotten them for the first time?
Well, I, I think in the future, it would be a baseline, and we'd be looking for growth. And I think where Peter, again, we are building, it's the oldest cliche in the world, we're building this plane as we're flying it. A better measure of readiness entering is the one that Peter mentioned, which is the TS Gold assessment, that we did not have yet collected at a robust enough level, though we're getting there this year, to report data on it in this. That is an early childhood assessment. Even then, those assessments, these are very little kids. They are not designed as accountability measures. They are designed as improvement metrics. Like, I see this kid, and I can therefore intervene with their language development because I'm seeing their TS Gold score. They are not intended like the MCAs, but World's Best Workforce forces us to, the structure of it, to report it as though it's like an MCA score, which is a system measure.
Right.
And it really is designed as an intervention measure, and so we have to have a measure of, you know, entering. So I think TS Gold will be better. We need to make sure that it's collected, which, you know, Peter and Erica Schumacher tell me it is. It's collected broadly across our programming. And then we would want to use FastBridge to be looking for growth once we get that kid into kinder, into our, into our schools. And I think to Dr. Marvin's question too, briefly, we will soon be bringing you some options for expanding the number of our kids in Rochester who get into our, as Peter was saying, very high-quality early childhood programming. I think that's an urgent priority. The additional point that I would mention, the, the parent and caregiver empowerment program that is going to be piloting this spring under Will's leadership also introduces parents to some core concepts of literacy and reading. It's not a reading curriculum, but it introduces people, and I think to begin to have parents understanding the value of exposing little kids to text and letters and just frankly, you have, you all seen little kids, they mimic reading before they can read. Those are tips we can give to parents, and so I think the parent engagement piece around early literacy is also going to be another lever that we can be pushing to address the is also going to be another lever that we can be pushing to address the concern that you're having. Because you're right, we don't serve those kids yet. Like, they're not in our schools. And if we can get them into our early childhood programs at age three, that's fantastic. We are very maxed out right now, and we need to create more spaces.
The Read Act will require us to mail home reports every year in the spring. Well, it doesn't have to be physical mail, but sent home to parents or caregivers with their child's results on our district-approved screener, which is FastBridge, each spring, K-3. So they have an idea of where their child is, and then that report is also required to include a couple of items, tips, strategies for what you could do with your kid on those topics. That's also what we are actively planning for, what that will look like, what that content will be. And then also, how do we make a half-a-page guide so people aren't lost in jargon and graphs? And, you know, make it really simple.
Dr. McLaughlin? Going back to your point you made earlier, that I hadn't contemplated early childhood being part of this data. And you answered that in response to Mr. Ruffin's question. Can you show us on your slides where the early childhood fits in? You know, which of those areas would?
Well, early childhood would probably fall into the same areas that we're talking about right here, which is, of course, I'm doing it on my laptop in the long screen. It just makes all kinds of good sense. Okay, here we go. So I would imagine that that would fall in best, right on those first two goals in the World's Best Workforce portion, that talk about kindergarten readiness. In future years, and then within the grid of strategic outcomes, the 30 or so, there's got to be a half a dozen that are related to TS Gold and kindergarten readiness, if I remember correctly.
So I kind of looked at this when I originally saw it, is that I was assuming it was K-enough, but it's really early childhood enough when we're looking at?
Well, the plan, the plan document itself only references, the goal is stated to be kindergarten readiness specifically.
Okay. So where does the early childhood then fit in? Will it be reported in these goals, or is it something else?
I believe that would be part of our 30 strategic goals that we?
Part of the strategic plan, not this report. Got it, okay.
Can I, it's a very astute question. We need a better measure of our early childhood in this plan. We don't have it this year. So we're using FastBridge, because it's the closest we could get. We didn't have the TS Gold Assessment yet at the level where we could say it was representative. And so my assumption, I think Peter's, too, is that next year we'll begin to use the TS Gold as that measure going in. And so this is, Director McLaughlin, an imperfect measure of entering school readiness to learn in entering school. It's more of a measure of how kids are doing in elementary school. And so we will be, next year, for sure, adding to this TS Gold, which is that early assessment, and then the MCAs, which obviously, grade three is where we first get that useful data. But if a kid is entering school ready to learn, we know their chances of being in the right place in third grade are dramatically better.
And then I had to follow up to Dr. Ruck's last point about sending the information out with some sort of, does MDA give us the content at all? Or do we create that locally?
At least so far, they have not.
Is it universal across the state, or each district?
Requirements are, but what people will be communicating, at least thus far, no, there's been no guidance on that specifically.
Got it. Thank you.
Director Barlow?
I have one question regarding workforce and two regarding A&amp;I. Peter, in regards to ACT, math, and reading, I know some colleges and universities are kind of rethinking as the value, the weight they put on that. Your personal opinion assessment, do you ever envision yourself potentially making a recommendation to the superintendent or board in terms of what weight we should put on it? Or do we continue to go with the flow in that regard? Or are there other ways to ensure that our students are college-ready other than their capacity to do well or perform well with the test such as that?
This is a great question. There's a few different things to that, I think. The first one is the change in admissions requirements in higher education generally, which is de-emphasizing standardized tests and emphasizing multiple measures. Things like, what's the highest grade in your last English and math class, what's your overall GPA, items like that. Nonetheless, most places still require you to submit an ACT score. So until that changes, I don't think we would de-emphasize it. That being said, to get the other part of your question, yes, there are other ways to measure it that I think are good or in some cases better. For me personally, if we are interested in measuring college and career readiness, good outcomes that we've talked about before are right in the SLEDs dashboard from the state, whether students are making a living wage within 12 months after graduating, or are they in a post-secondary training of some kind, and do they require what is still lovingly called remediation in the legislation when they got there? You know, our goal, our ultimate goal being to prepare students for life and society, those are two really good measures of whether or not we are able to do that. Did we prepare them for what's next? We can measure what's next. But then also the multiple measures components that I just talked about. You know, we can measure stuff at the end of, you know, when our seniors graduate. We can take averages about, you know, where would they fit on the multiple measures structure that Minsky uses, excuse me, Minnesota State uses, for example. All things that are other ways to get at the same information.
And then as relates to A&amp;I, I was curious to see that, let me find it, increased the percentage of teachers, that ESPs were kind of folded into that. And I'll just leave it there. I was interested to see that ESPs had been folded into the category that I was referencing, percentage of teachers in Rochester Public Schools. And then just quickly move to my final question regarding partner district participation. And I forget what language you used to identify the firefighter, welding one and two, CNA, culinary. How are we making our students aware of these wonderful opportunities? You know, no secret, I'm a retired firefighter, so I'm thinking, everyone! I'm going to be a firefighter. But I only see 17 RPS students enrolled. And you're not necessarily on the front end of how we're informing our students as to these pathways. Of these, of our students, and that this falls under A&amp;I, and you haven't or weren't asked to, well, how, can you disaggregate that? Male, female, and then as in a category? Any just ballpark thought as to what the 17 students from RPS might look like?
Truly, no. I don't know if you do at all.
Okay.
We can get that to you if you want to.
And I'm thrilled to see the existence of options, opportunities such as this. And I think the numbers might suggest that many of our students may be, I don't, some of our students may not be aware of these great opportunities, or you can kind of walk out the door, cross the stage into a career.
To speak to your other point about the teacher equity line item, I don't know if, Carl and, you might want to, I guess, but I don't know if in the comments, if that 5.6 includes those percentages or not.
No, it does. That's my fault. I wrote this.
Okay. I just wanted to get back to, I think that was right, but.
Madam Chair, can Carl clear up my?
Yes, please.
Yes, we, our current number of teachers who self-identify as a person of color, so if they leave a blank, we do not count. If anybody leaves that category blank, we don't, do not count that. That's 84 out of 1498, so that's 5.61. That's just teachers. And then we have a category, then we look at all our staff, and then we take all our staff of about 2,700, 310 identify as a person of color, that's, excuse me, 11.13. And then our leaders or administrators, out of 78, we have eight individuals who identify as a person of color, it's 10.25%.
Thank you. And yes, I completely agree, that's important to have those separate.
Director Barlow, on the point of kids finding these classes, that is a huge priority for us right now, kids more effectively finding these classes. If you recall, when we had the Kellogg team here for school improvement, I jumped in and asked the board to let the Kellogg folks come up, because you were so interested in the proposal that Mr. Ruffin and Ms. Hogan were doing on the new software that we're purchasing for course planning and other things, identification. And so that work with not just Zello, but our counselors and others using that tool, is the front end, the planning process. We have got to do a much more proactive and comprehensive set of, have a more proactive and comprehensive set of experiences for kids starting in middle school, where they begin looking forward. And then, and this is actually in Dr. Agbomulu's and Mr. Ruffin's goals for the year, we need to reinvent our course registration process. As you have commented when you approved the course registration guide at the meeting next week, that is not a page-turner. I mean, it is a dense, it is a dense, small font thing. But as I think Director Cook was saying, if you actually read it, there's a ton of great content in there. But it is not presented for a way that an adolescent would be able to find these opportunities.
Unless you were in 1980, maybe.
Exactly, 1980, where we might have been there. Absolutely. And so we need to change the presentation of that, and then we need to change the context in which kids register. As the register, there have been these fascinating studies that show that registering for classes is actually a very high-impact moment for kids. If you have kids sitting there and they just get a presentation, or they see another kid registering for a class, it can immediately change their willingness to try, because that's the moment. And once they've registered, they, most kids think they're locked in. Like, okay, I have to do this for the whole semester, but that moment of registration is a time when we can say, hey, we have CTEC, we have PTEC, we have firefighting, we have calculus, you know, whatever it might be. So the registration process and guide is definitely a priority for us to rethink going forward. So a really key question for that metric.
Director Marvin? So this is a totally new direction that my question addresses. So one of the resolutions that's going to come before the MSBA Delegate Assembly on December 2nd, which Karen and I will be attending, concerns how we average in MCA scores of students who don't take the test, because right now that's required. So I don't expect you to have this information off the top of your head, and I suppose it can change from year to year. Obviously, last year it wasn't impacted at all, because nobody took it. But does that, would that really change, do you think, what we would be reporting?
Without a doubt, yes.
And what I find so frustrating is that we are, I mean, kids are required to do it, but we are also required to send a note home to parents that say, you may opt out of this test. And so I'm wondering what impact that might have on our, a true reporting of where our kids are. Because honestly, you know, somebody who's not taking the test is still, that's a zero.
Most, in my experience, and even among staff, like even among employees who do this all day, very few people understand that if a child opts out of the MCA, that child's score is a zero, and it's still counted in the school's average and the school district's average. So every opt-out drops our average MCA score significantly. If that were to change, yes, our numbers would go up. What percentage of our students opt out every year? It varies by school, and it varies by level, but it's hundreds. We discourage folks from opting out, because the MCA is one of our best ways to have a temperature check on how our schools are doing at a system level. The MCAs are not useful for making instructional decisions, they're not designed for that. But they are very useful for evaluating just sort of a snapshot of how school's doing as a whole.
And I think that's why probably parents and their kids opt out, because it doesn't impact them. It has nothing to do with, you know, it's not going to go on their transcript or anything else. It's sort of like, why should I take this test if I, if it doesn't?
Well, although it?
Affect me, affect me.
It is transcripted, and you do get, you can test out of developmental coursework in Minnesota State Colleges and Universities using your MCA score. It also counts for PSEO admission. It's the easiest way to get into PSEO is to have a high MCA score.
So how widely is that disseminated? You know, along, you can opt out, but if you do, you won't have this information where your child could benefit?
Under state law, we have the opt-out information on our website, right on the testing page, and there's a link with the form. In the information that we put on our website, as well as the information that we sent home to families last year, we did include bullet points to the effect of most of what I just said. Beyond that, as a measure of communication, I know that we did a lot of work with our staff to help them understand the implications as well of some of those things. Because like I said, a lot of folks don't have that knowledge necessarily. It also is complicated a little bit, because the state requires us to send home individual student reports, but the assessment is not designed for that, and so it confuses people. They think it's about, you know, the MCA is about an individual, and it's not, it's about.
Thank you. When we talked about the revision of the report for next year, I was thinking about timing, and that usually is this time of the year that we are looking at the report that we're submitting to MDE. But we've talked about how we're going to be revising the plan, which includes more than just, you know, our goals and our outcomes. So is it something that we need to schedule in the ABCD? Where we'll have an earlier conversation about what the plan looks like, and then an end-of-the-year conversation about the report? How do you see that timeline?
Thank you. One of the things that's frustrating about this is that every year, all three years I've been here, MDE releases the template in the mid-fall, and it's due by December 15th. And we have no knowledge of what the template will look like before it's released. And the same thing would be true of World's Best Workforce and our need to now update the plan. The timelines at the state level, at least in past recent years, have not been in the favor of doing what you're suggesting, which is being more planful. Because every year, the statute doesn't actually mandate the framework that is in the form that you're going to be asked, that you're going to vote to approve. It's the department decides what the report should look like every year. They don't have flexibility in which indicators, like they have to ask for a kindergarten readiness indicator, they have to ask for a gap-closing indicator, they have to ask, that's in the statute. But the rest is actually flexible. And so every year, we wait to see what the template is going to include, and then we respond, usually with a less-than-two-month turnaround time. I think this could be a good subject of discussion, like with Commissioner Jett and other people at the department, who is former superintendent, to see if there is a way to actually have this be somewhat more. As board members may remember, I know the Legislative Committee may, World's Best Workforce was almost repealed last legislative session. So it almost went away. And so I think people at the department are frankly looking at the legislature and saying, is this thing going to continue to be law, or is it going to, you know, be changed? The Achievement and Integration has also had some, you know, changes over the years. So I wish I could say yes. I think that leaving aside World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration, we do need to get into that kind of regular pattern at the board level and at the school level of looking at our data in a way that doesn't move the goalposts every year. And so I think, yes, when we do the 2024 calendar for the board, we should put those dates on the calendar for our work. I frankly am a little skeptical that it's going to align as well as I had hoped when we did the first version of the ABCD with the state. The whole idea was to converge it all in the fall, and we'd have it all. And I'm thinking we may just need to have it two tracks. There's a discussion that the board has to have to meet the state reporting requirements, and then there's the timeline we want to have in Rochester for improvement.
Do you think, if there's no more questions, oh, Dr. Cook?
Yeah. So for the Achievement and Integration outcomes, does the Achievement and Integration funding stipulate that that funding is focused on inter-district integration? funding stipulate that, that that funding is focused on inter-district integration as opposed to integration within our own district or within our own schools? Is that, or is that a direction that we've chosen?
There is no parameter to what the state tells you, you need to do to allocate those dollars among the kind of three priorities of the funding stream. One is, as I was saying at the outset, not about integration at all, it's about achievement. So it could be about kids going to college, kids reading on grade level, regardless of degree. The other would be inter and intra district, and they don't give any percentage or parameters. So in our budget that we will redesign this spring and then bring to you as part of the budget, there's not much money going into that, in the, the collaboration with the other districts, but it's happening. It's not a big ticket item, but it meets the intent of the legislation. So that could be much larger, but of course then we would have to reallocate dollars from the other priorities. So no, Director Cook, they don't give us parameters, we need to make sure the dollars are tied to the plan. So when we bring you the plan, it will need to be MTSS, post-secondary pathways, the, our collaboration with the other districts is also focused on post-secondary, and then the, the teacher diversity work. So we'll need to bring a plan to you that ties those $3 million to those goals for next year, but, but they don't give us guidelines for the breakdown of how much we can put into those or the integrations.
Great.
And I think we welcome a discussion with the board about the best ways to allocate those dollars. The state, I guess, doesn't constrain us, they say, here's your dollars, it has to tie to the plan, and we can take a look at actually where we set those priorities. Right now, the biggest priority for us in the, the, the achievement and integration budget, which predates my time, is reading specialists. We're funding a .8 reading specialist, and that's where most of the money is going. And one of the things that we've talked about is, is that use of those dollars, well, I'm sure that use of those dollars would not be aligned with the future work that we're doing on the science of reading, because we're thinking every day about the best structures within our schools to support reading, and we are going to have to reallocate those FTEs paying for, paid for by achievement and integration to align with this plan. So if we're going to maintain those reading specialists, we're going to have to find another way to pay for them next year.
Just talking about reading made me smile immediately because I, I remembered that in the last meeting, we approved a pretty significant, successful grant for that additional funding, $600,000, I think, so kudos to the team that, we didn't even talk about it because it was in the consent agenda, but it's awesome. So yeah, glad that that's on the way. The other thing I wanted to just circle back to is the discussion earlier about readiness for school and readiness for kindergarten, making sure that our early childhood systems are producing students that are ready to learn as much as possible, and also, Dr. Rock, what you mentioned about the communication with parents in K through three, parents of K through three students, reporting both about the status of their FastBridge assessments for their learner and perhaps some strategies. I, that, that's a whole, the whole angle of, of course, we talk all the time about empowering parents and, and partnering with our families and caregivers as much as possible, but that's just a whole angle of solving the literacy riddle in our district that I hadn't really thought a whole lot about. I, I love the idea of providing additional resources to maximize the ability of our families to assist their learners, for those learners that are ready to learn, because that will, there's going to still be 30, 40% of students that really need a very systematic, structured form of, of literacy instruction. But of course, in the schools, our resources are limited, and so the, you know, the better able that we are to direct our resources to the students that really need the tiered supports, the better off we'll all be. And I, I think if, anyway, yeah, I just, I really liked that idea of assisting in a very targeted, intentional way our families in reinforcing skills for the, the students that are ready to thrive and ready to take off with that. I, I, I'm having a hard time enunciating it, obviously, but the, the cautionary warning or bell that I'm hearing is that we also need to recognize that there are students that, those early learners, that are going to require a very systematic, structured approach, that's going to be hard to provide in the home environment. Of course, you know, language acquisition and auditory processing and all that kind of stuff can be complimentary and help lay the found, the groundwork, but anyway, it's exciting, it's, this is great.
I think I can make you slightly happier in that. So K3 reports for every student, grades four through 12 reports for every student that does not meet the definition of grade level on FastBridge. So we actually will be mailing reports K12, it's just that for grades four through 12, so I say I have all the same information, strategies, whatever with the family, but after third grade, it becomes just a subset of students. We'll be mailing out thousands and thousands of those every year.
Does it literally have to be snail mail, or can it be-
No, it can be electronic. I just keep saying mail because-
It's mail in school. Going to the graduation rates, the original goal is written that it will be at or above 2019 graduation rates, and if I have my numbers right from what I looked at on the MDE report card, the overall graduation rate for Rochester Public Schools was 85.9.
Correct.
So that means that last year, we matched the overall graduation rate from 2019.
Correct.
So I think that's good news, given that we've had the COVID dip.
Yeah, we've come all the way back from before that, yep.
Do we know if that's the case? I know some of our sub, our student groups made some significant gains, do we know what that is since 2019 compared to 2023, our subgroup?
I didn't look, but we can get that information, yeah.
Because I am assuming this goal, when we go forward, we're not going to look at 2019 anymore.
Right.
Going forward, we're going to look at how we do from year to year. Okay, that'd be just nice to see if we-
Yeah, we can do that, I can get that.
And on the post-secondary data, which is, I think, some positive news, as I read it, the data only counts the graduating seniors.
Correct.
So there could be students in grades nine through 11 who are also taking and receiving post-secondary credits that are in our system.
Yep.
So it's more than perhaps those 476 students engaging in post-secondary-
Yeah, and the rea, that's exactly right. And the reason we measured it that way is students can take post-secondary options in, especially 11th grade. So if we only looked at a snap, a cross-section of the four years, we'd never be reporting a student's full experience in RPS. So that's why we report on, and we, like, it's not just what seniors took, it's during their four years with us, did they take?
Superintendent, you mentioned that if we were, got to the point where we were done talking about the data, that you wanted to talk about some of the plans in the achievement and integration plan. Do we want to move to that now? Any other questions on the data? All right, let's do that.
I think it really was mostly, we didn't have a separate presentation prepared. Just to open the floor for board members, if there are questions that you have about the three broad priorities that we're funding with achievement and integration, so those are multi-tiered systems of support in literacy, the post-secondary pathways work, and the teacher recruitment work. And just very briefly to highlight a couple of top-level priorities in each case, the discussion we've had tonight about data, and with a particular emphasis on FastBridge, I think is highly illustrative of where we are with the MTSS and literacy work. We have got solid teams in every school that are looking at that data and getting very clear about where our struggling readers are. In some of our schools, like Elton Hills, like Franklin, where they're a bit ahead, they are clearly in the intervention space, where they are talking about how, whether it's tier-one instruction for all kids, or tier-two instruction in the classroom, or tier-three, they act on that data. In other places, I was in a meeting with a veteran, very skilled high school English teacher, quite recently, in one of our schools, who said, wow, that data is showing us we have 25% of our kids who are struggling readers. They're not candidly in the intervention element yet in a robust way, they're identifying those struggling readers at the high school level. So with MTSS, putting in place those, the structured teams, moving forward with the measurement, and then beginning to move robustly into the professional development. As you mentioned, the state grant that we were, highly competitive grant that we were pleased to receive, is going to supplement the funds that we've already allocated to implementation of the science of reading from district dollars plus remaining COVID dollars. And so the professional development had a meeting with Dr. Obamwo and her team today. Calendering out that professional development is a not insignificant challenge, because we know time is the most precious commodity for our teachers, and finding time when they can engage in robust, multi-session professional development is another key part of that. So those are some key things with the MTSS piece. With the post-secondary pathways piece, and Will leads that work, so he can jump in, I think you got a glimpse of the software piece of it at a previous meeting in looking at Zello. What we didn't get to as much in that meeting is the really fundamental shift that we are making in the role of the school counselor around that work. We have amazing school counselors in Rochester, of course, we need more of them, but they candidly were spread very much across a wide array of all very good outcomes, and, and we were not fully aligned with the best practices in their field as defined by the American School Counselors Association, that post-secondary career planning is a tier-one responsibility for school counselors. It is something that is the foundational. And what's really exciting, we've created the position of Lead Counselor that Alex Agano is now occupying, and we're working with the National Post-Secondary Strategy Institute, or NIPSE, which is based in Chicago and has got a leadership from Chicago Public Schools, which produced stunning improvement over 20 years in their kids going on to college and progressing through college and earning college degrees, including four-year degrees. And they are providing that technical assistance. I think you're going to be down, Will is at, is it next week or coming in the next couple of weeks, where we, there's a grant, we didn't get the grant, but NIPSE got the grant to work with us, so we're not paying them. And that is really putting counselors at the center of that work in a really important way, and that's work that Will and Heather Hogan are leading. So I think that would be a piece. And then finally, on the recruitment piece, and again, just like I said, Will could jump in on this, Carl can, we've hired our first recruiter. And so we have got a recruiter in Carl's department who's full-time, thinking about how we actually proactively get the best teachers and the most diverse teachers and other employee groups into our school district, rather than kind of waiting for them to come. We've talked a lot in the couple of years I've been here about the value of job fairs, that it can be an amazing way to connect with, you know, a teacher and ESP, and we're certainly going to continue to do that, but that's, that's a heavy lift in terms of the number of people who are going to walk into this room or a room and actually physically come in. And so what we're beginning to work on in our HR department is that strategy to leverage technology. I will say, I've said personally to Carl, and I had the referendum passed, it would have been one of the first things, we would have gotten the checkbook to purchase. We urgently need new software that allows you to apply for a job in Rochester Public Schools that is much more user-friendly, and there are software packages now where there's an analytic function that helps you flag a person who is likely not only to perform well in your district, but to stay with you over time. And so there's, there's a, there's a whole nother paradigm in terms of the software piece of it. And then literally this week, we have got seven working groups that are kicking off to develop what we were previously calling our human capital strategy, and now our people strategy, because human capital sounded to some people too cruel and sort of financial. And we have got those groups convening to look at induction, recruitment, recognition, staff support, exit interviews when someone leaves Rochester Public Schools, and when Carl and I were putting together those groups, I frankly was worried that, given how busy everybody is and how much is going on, we would have to beat the bushes to find people to do it, and we had more than 130 people volunteer out of the blue to give their time to help us think through those strategies. And everybody in the end got to be on their first choice, or they agreed to migrate to another group. And so those, just like our DISC's group, DISC groups last year, they will result in a series of recommendations that'll come to me, and then I'll share those with you like we did. But that's, that's about recognizing the fact that if we recruit the best teachers, we've got to support the best teachers and make this a great place for them to work. And so it's not just the front end, but it's the support that we give them on an ongoing basis. So that's kind of a conversational overview of some things that are happening in the post-secondary, the MTSS and the recruitment piece. Glad to invite any colleagues to jump in with any additional thoughts on that, or any questions about it as well. But since, I like the fact that the achievement and integration plan template, unlike World's Best Workforce, actually makes you report on what you're doing to try and improve the outcomes. So I wanted to make sure that even though we didn't put that in the PowerPoint, we at least got, got a bit of that into the room, and there's somewhat more in the report that you all have in simply.
On the post-secondary pathways piece, do, do we have the ability now, or is, is there a way that we would have information about, like, a longer-term outcome? You, you mentioned, Dr. Rock, the SLEDs data provides some information about 12 months post-graduation, but do we have the ability to know what type of careers our graduates go into, or maybe even like what majors they study, or something about their career trajectory?
So we do have, through this, through SLEDs, which stands for State Longitudinal Educational Data System. So it's, it gathers information of students from early childhood through the end of college. So we would have the ability, and it's a lagging indicator, I mean, you're talking like six or seven years later, but to see whether they graduated, the wage information is derived from tax returns primarily, so it does include sector of employment in addition to hourly wage or annual pay within a certain number of ranges. The post-secondary information in SLEDs is somewhat limited in that it only includes a subset of post-secondary institutions, but it covers the vast majority of where our kids go. The other source for that information is the National Student Clearinghouse, which will tell you all of what you just said, but we have to pay for it, it's five figures, so that's not in the cards at the moment. And it's annually, it would be five figures annually.
Yeah, although the SLEDs right now, it does have a subcontract, truth and advertise, I was involved in creating SLEDs a long time ago, and so I'm, I was thrilled to hear young people like Peter Houston, and he is young.
The first draft was terrible, so now I know who to complain to.
Yeah. I wrote it, I'm, this is, I've never, I wrote the first grant for SLEDs when I was with a French teacher. So you had a social studies teacher and a French teacher writing a data system grant. We were not ready for prime time, but the Commissioner Segren asked us to do it, and it started the ball rolling. The thing that, the thing that's exciting, actually, Director Cook, is that data does exist, though it's not populated in the easy-to-access SLEDs, SLEDs data dashboard, but the Department of Employment Economic Development does capture it, and some districts, Bloomington in particular, up in the cities, gets an extract from the SLEDs research team through DED, and they can tell you with great specificity the fields that their kids are working on. So the data's there, it's not right now in the easy, accessible SLEDs dashboard, but if that was something that we decided was of interest to us, there's a process where you can make a data request of the SLEDs Research Committee, which is like a consortium of higher ed and others, and, I mean, this is not a controversial study, it's saying we want to know where Rochester kids work. And so we could absolutely look at something like that. In Bloomington, they really have built a very robust kind of career pathways program around their employment data to look at where their students are actually working after they graduate, especially the kids who don't go on to a four-year college, because it gives you that, that data for where they're going. So we could absolutely think about including that.
Yeah.
We talked about it in doing the grid, and frankly, we have, as this whole conversation tonight illustrates, we have so much fundamental work to put in place that is very proximal, like early literacy measures, like things, that we kind of said that's a next generation for us, because that's a little more down the road, but, but it's very doable.
Yeah, the SLEDs data, the long-form SLEDs data will give you by student, all of those details. those details, and it's not categorized. Like, it will give you, like, their major is this, they graduated here, now they work here, so on and so forth. It's protected data, so we have to apply for it, but.
Yeah, well, I, so just to, I'll clarify where, where my question's coming from, not just sort of in the abstract, wondering what kind of data is available. I, I think it would be, and it, it is, it's a question of priorities and timing, and, you know, we've got plenty of things to work on right now, for sure, but I think it could be interesting for our district to look into, especially like the, the gender disparities, or perhaps lack of gender disparities in particular fields. In computer science and the hard sciences, industry-wide, it's well-known that there's a significant discrepancy between men and women in scientific fields. The biological and medical sciences get accepted from that just a little bit, although there's still definitely a gender disparity there. And I, and I think that, to the extent that we understood whether that was an issue with RPS graduates, it could lend itself to considering some additional interventions, like maybe we ramp up Girls Who Code, or maybe there's some other kind of specific project that we would have some reason to think would be a meaningful intervention to addressing and ultimately unlocking the potential of women scientists and engineers that would be helpful for our community. And I think particularly interesting for our largest employer in town, Mayo Clinic, has dedicated a lot of interest and energy to gender disparity in the sciences, and so, and, and, you know, perhaps there's other student groups that we would identify and might lend themselves to some specific interventions. So I, that's kind of where my seed of an idea was directed to, but, but yeah, maybe a next-generation inquiry for another day. But yeah, thank you. That, that's all really exciting and really helpful.
I think the other piece of this that needs to be said is, and we look at this every year, but I think I can honestly say, this and last year is the first year where I can look at this data, and it's not easily matched, right? It's not an easy crosswalk. But if you were to sit down with our strategic plan, our building blocks that are now displayed on that back wall, the DISC presentations that we've been getting at the board, and even the, the skip presentations, I can crosswalk each of these goals that are in the World's Best Workforce and the, and the Achievement and Integration Plan beyond what's in here to work that is actively being done, actively being reported to the board, and actively available for our community to see. So while it, I, I feel like it's the, the board you see in those crime shows, you know, where the strings are all connecting across the bulletin board, but I feel like everything's on the bulletin board. And I think that might be part of the conversation that we share with the public, at the public meeting last week, is this kind of, of information. And I, speaking of the grid, for those watching, and to remind board members that we do have an agenda item scheduled for December 12th, where not just this information, but you said 30 indicators.
That's approximately 30.
About 30 data indicators that are on that grid that was developed to measure our outcomes, monitoring our strategic plan. We're going to have a report on that. So more data discussion to come. Any other comments, Director McLaughlin?
I have one really technical question, because I'm the one assigned to do the meeting summary tonight. This slide that has the fire fighter, the welding, the CNA, and the culinary, are those our only industry certifications, or is that just an example?
They're definitely not our only industry certifications.
Okay, so it is a sample of just ones that.
Yeah, for sure. I don't know, in that slide, I think it, it's just where we focused our collaboration with those external districts.
Okay, okay. So it's tied to those partners, rather than just our only ones available? Okay. And then I just wanted to point out more of a comment, that I understand the limitations of the data related to, I want to find the right slide here, the, our American Indian students with the increase in their post-secondary, that it's a small population, but I also recognize that I, I'm not sure that it would have increased from 0 to 45.4, if not the work of our American Indian group in the district that is assisting with, of those students with all kinds of things, but I can see that this data really demonstrates that they're doing really good work in that area, and I appreciate that.
The first thing that jumped out.
Yeah. And that, it's not an accident that that.
Oh, it's not, and I triple checks. It's not an accident.
Yes. So I appreciate the work that, that that staff is doing to help our students.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Mr. Ruck.
I would like to take this time to acknowledge Willie Tipton. Willie Tipton is part of our recruiting. And I say that because Willie spent approximately two years building a relationship with a man who was in another state. And this year, we finally got him to move to Rochester and become a teacher in one of our high schools. But I think that's the type of thing that we're going to have to do, is build relationships with people. I don't know how he met this man in another state, but he did move from Arkansas. So to get someone from Arkansas to come to Minnesota, I mean, that took two years of convincing, but he's here, right? And he's doing well. And I, I sat and talked to him for a little bit, and he had pictures on the wall with him and former presidents, and I was like, wait a minute, like, who are you? So we, we have this magnificent person, Ramirez Beto, at Century High School, who didn't fall into our lap, but he came here because of the relationship that was built by Willie, and I think that needs to be acknowledged. The other thing I want to acknowledge is, we have another person who moved from out of state to come to Rochester Public Schools, because she saw our Employees of Color Resource Group website. So I think that's important to note as well. One, because the group is here, and it has been here for a number of years, but two, the website is making the group more visible, and people are, are starting to say, hey, if I move there, I will have a support system in place, and I know that I won't have to be alone in this endeavor. So those are two things that I wanted to highlight, because I think they're important. And then lastly, I'm going to put Dr. Obamo on the, on the, on the spot, too, because she also mentioned that when she was deciding to work in Rochester, she also looked at our website, too. And because she did see another person of color in a higher leadership position, that made it a little bit easier for her to transition to Rochester as well. So I think as we start to move forward, we also have to do better at highlighting the key areas in our different recruiting spaces, Carl, because it's starting to work. Even though it's one here, and one here, and one here, we have one high-level district leader, we have another high school teacher, we have a former EL student who's now working in a community schools role, but Intosar Khan also has her administrator license, so I can see her moving to a principal role as well. So let's just keep moving forward with our recruiting efforts, because clearly, it's starting to work, we're starting to see some traction, where in years past, we haven't seen that from people outside of Rochester. So I just wanted to note that.
And I like this pretending, too.
Thank you. I, I'd go work for, move somewhere to work with Will before me. I'm not, I'm not hurt.
Very, very important points.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you. Thanks for your work, and we'll be seeing this on the consent agenda at the next meeting. Our next agenda item is 4.1, our ABCD. Are there any items a board member would like to add for consideration on a future agenda? Hearing none. Our next meeting is at 5:00 PM on November 28th, and that's that public meeting on the World's Best Workforce. Immediately following that special session, we'll have a regular meeting. On December 5th, at 5:00 PM, we have a study session. On December 5th, immediately following the study session, no, that's not right, that's on the 12th, we have, at 6 o'clock, sorry, at 6:00 in December 12th, we have our special session, which is our truth and taxation hearing. And then immediately following the special session, we have our regular meeting. The questions from tonight's meeting are available on, the questions and answers submitted before the meeting by board members are on Simbli, and hearing no other businesses meeting is adjourned at 6:20 PM.